I would like to call tonight's zoning board of appeals meeting to order. We started with old business and new and new every time. A bit of an unusual thing, every year we're required to reorganize. So I will no longer be the chair in a few moments.
That's not true.
That's not true.
That's not true. Don't get your hopes up, okay?
I may not be the chair in a few moments, how's that?
That's better.
All right, so what we have to nominate and vote on who the chair, vice chair, and secretary of the board are?
Who's the existing secretary?
That would be Richard.
Richard.
All right. So would anyone like to nominate someone to be chair?
You. I'd like to nominate you, Richard.
That's up to you, whatever you'd like.
I just did.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess I'm the chair.
All right. Congrats.
All right. The nomination for someone to be vice chair.
Bobby, is that a vice chair?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
I accept.
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we're all set.
Wait, 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 wait. We have to also vote on secretary.
Richard Negrelli.
We nominate Richard Negrelli.
Ah, yeah, I accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right, see how fast we did that?
Done.
Done.
Thought you would drop that on Andy since he wasn't here.
The next thing we
We'll make him president.
Is approval of minutes from a couple of past meetings. Do we want to address that tonight since Andy's not here?
Well, Andy's not here, he's on a few of them. But if we keep these things going, we'll have like five of them to do.
Maybe we can just vote on the oldest one, April 10th?
Okay.
I'm gonna
Go ahead, you go.
Motion to accept the April 10th meeting, 2025 is presented.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll hold off until
Yeah, yeah. It's something good to do.
Okay, the first item.
I am going to go sit over there because it's my neighbors, the Gaatleys.
Okay, yeah, I was just gonna say that.
Yeah, okay, I'm gonna
One of the policies that we have to follow is if anyone is a neighbor of the petitioner or the petitioner themselves, they have to step out and they cannot participate in what we're doing. And Mr. Negrelli's neighbors or near neighbors is the first item on our agenda. So Andrew will be at the third voting member for this one. Right, so we have to, yeah, so Andrew will be the third voting member on this. The petition that we're gonna consider is the petition of Allison Gaetley for a variance under section 175-29 for front yard setback from 35 to 17 feet and a finding for Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, to construct a one-story addition on a pre-existing non-conforming structure. The property is located at 2 Jennings Drive on Assessor's Map 13 Lot 63 in the low-density residential R40 zone. And if you could tell us your name and address and a little bit about your project, that would be great.
Thanks. My name's Allison Gaetley. I live at 2 Jennings Drive in Abington. And the purpose of this building is for my son and his wife and three children to, they've moved in with us, and my partner and I would like to build an accessory dwelling unit where we will live on one level as we get older. They have been trying to buy a house and it's so hard out there in the market, and we just thought that as we're getting older and the yard is perfect for the kids, I'm on it, we're on a dead end cul-de-sac, and it, we just thought it would be a nice long-term project for the, for our family to all stay together and sort of take care of each other as we age. And that's the purpose of it.
How large is the addition?
It's going to be 20, 25 by 30.
Right. It was off the Yeah.
We'll share a deck, so we'll have a, the existing deck that off of the main house, our three dwelling unit will run alongside the side of the deck, so we'll have a common entrance of the deck.
Will the deck be connected to both buildings? Will there be access through the existing structure to the new one, or is it a separate access?
Just from the deck.
Just from the deck.
And the yard, I mean, just from, there's a, we could go through our yard and go into the back door.
And the reason you have a front setback rather than a side setback is you're on the corner, basically, so you have two front setbacks.
That's exactly right, yeah. And we just have woods in the back, so
Is your existing driveway big enough to support the two families?
There'll be another driveway coming off of Diane's Circle.
Are you all gonna put another driveway?
Yes, we are.
Where would that be, is that gonna be located to the far end of the addition or up at the front of the addition?
It's gonna be in the back, near the
By the pool?
Sort of, yeah. So here's where we'll have another door at the back, this, looking at it from the woods, so there'll be a small deck with steps and there'll be a driveway there.
Okay, can I, can I see that for a moment?
Yeah, I thought you had these.
Oh, it wasn't in your packet? No, this was not in that packet. Did you know about the, the driveway being added to this? It's not currently displayed on
Yeah, maybe you need one parking spot.
Okay.
There was something about the accessory dwelling unit that they had to have a second driveway.
You have to have the one pocket spot, that's the requirement for the ADU.
For two cars, I think.
Okay. Andrew, you wanna see that?
Yes, please, thanks.
Give the other pictures that I have.
Anything you have, we'd love to see.
Yeah, if you have additional
We love drawings here.
I'm sorry, I thought you
No, I apologize, but we didn't. That's what it was. You see the deck? So will they go through your house to get to their house?
No, they'll go in.
They're gonna go around the house? So they're gonna come in off Diane's
That'll be mine, that'll be my area.
Okay, I apologize.
Diane's Circle.
That's because I just didn't see it, so I apologize. So the egress, they'll go out on the deck and you have an existing access to that deck also, correct? Can you see anything? No, just a question. Looks from the drawings that you're gonna keep with the same architectural style that, of the existing home.
Yes.
In that light, is it okay if we add this to the official record for this filing? Can we keep these, these drawings?
Sure, I, yes, I have copies on my computer, absolutely.
Yeah.
Did you see them?
I have not yet, no.
Okay. So when that, when we get to the end in our verbiage, we will say something to the fact that you'll maintain the existing look and feel at the neighborhood and all the associated exterior structure.
Yes, and the plan is to put new windows on the existing house and new siding, the entire
Okay, so it's all gonna tie together.
Yes.
Good for you. Nick, a question for you about water and sewer, ADUs, that, we don't have to worry about that, right? They're allowed to have one by right?
The ADU is allowed by right, I mean, water sewer will be up to the water apartment. I haven't heard of any restrictions on single-family.
Okay.
You know, two-family type issues.
Okay.
They're certainly getting tight on more commercial type development, but
Yeah. Okay, I just wanna make sure that we're, we don't have to worry about that here.
Yeah, I mean, they'll, they'll need water to get a building permit, so they'll have to apply with Crystal for adding the bedroom, but
Right.
Can you just expand a little bit on what the hardship is related to the variance?
What the hardship is?
Yep. So for variance, you're required to
Supposed to be 35 feet from, and so the one corner of the new building will get 17 feet from the street instead of 35 feet, because I have two front facing
So essentially, basically
Exposures, I guess.
The topography of the lot?
Yeah.
The shape and topography of the lot?
The way I, well, we built that house originally, the original house, and we have it sort of kitty-corner on the lot. It's not facing straight to Jennings Drive, so there is, it's a bit of an angle, but it appears when you come down the street that it's facing you, so it's just one corner that we need the variance for.
Yep. No, it is definitely on the structure.
To determine that there is a hardship of, of, right?
I mean, that, part of that's owing to the way the original prop, the original house is structured, though.
Yep. Yeah, that's it. But once again, we find ourselves in a town where we build non-conforming and then we question whether or not we allow building on our performance, so, yeah. It doesn't look like they could easily accommodate that. It would be even closer on the other, if we move this to the other side, it would be even closer to the property line where there's an inner neighbor.
Oh, on the other end of the house, yeah, no, we couldn't.
But the existing non-conformity on the front yard setbacks, only what, a couple of feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, four and a half.
Any other questions for her?
Nope.
I don't really, I don't either. At this point, we're gonna ask anyone else in the audience would like to come up and speak on this issue, and then we'll have a discussion amongst ourselves. So is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to come up and speak on this project? Do you know if any of your butters have any objections? You don't, you're going here to object, so
No, they all got letters. We're a very close neighborhood, so many of them have spoken and they're, they support it wholeheartedly.
Thanks. All right, well then, since we don't have any other questions for you, we should take a vote on closing the public part of the discussion so we can discuss it amongst ourselves. Thank you. Motion to call it back from the public? Public hearing? Motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, discussion. Again, as I said before, outrageously loud, is that we're in a non-conforming environment with continuing non-conformity, and it's really not, without looking at the layout of the lot, a little bit, it's 20 thousand square feet, there's not really any space on either side of that house to make that work on either side, so I don't, I don't believe this is gonna unhinge the neighborhood at all, and with 17 feet on one corner and 30 feet on another corner, I think it's more than adequate with the driveway there on Diane's Circle side, so Again, the only thing I have to say is that since we don't have an elevation picture of, and we just got them, just to make sure that the architecture stays within the neighborhood and what the existing house looks like, that'd be probably something I'll just word into the agreement if we decide to go forward with this. Andrew, do you have anything on this?
Um, no, I don't really think to add.
Seeing an awful lot of multi-generational situations pop up.
It's, it's happening a lot, so All right, there's no further discussion, entertain a motion to respond to this petition. We have one or two, we have two, right? Two, probably one at a time. On the petition of Allison Gaetley for variance under 175-29 for a front yard setback from 35 feet to 17 feet, a motion that we approve the variance for the front yard setback.
Any condition you wanna place on that?
The only condition I would like to place on that would be that the exterior construction of the house maintained the existing current home, be continued on as it's been explained that she's gonna redo the siding anyhow and make it all uniform, that as long as, and the roof lines stay within the structure of the fame of the, of the neighborhood, I approve that section for, I wish that we approved that variance.
I mean, do you want it, Nick, would you prefer it be in conformity with as-built and submitted at the hearing?
That certainly should be.
Do you wanna add that, then, as the language, then? Because she submitted
In addition to adding, adding, adding the elevation paperwork that was supplied to us tonight, that, that followed along with also.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On the motion of the petition of Allison Gaetley for a finding under Mass General Law, Section 48, Section 6, to construct a one-story addition on a pre-existing non-conforming structure, property located at 2 Jennings Drive in the Massachusetts, 13 Lot 63, in the low-density residential R40 zone, a motion that we allow the finding.
I'll second on that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You'll receive a letter that I'll have to sign in the next week or so, once it gets filed with the town clerk.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
All right. The, the next item on our agenda is the petition of Clifford and Donna Murray for a finding under Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, construct a 24 by 30 addition on a pre-existing non-conforming structure. The property is located at 26 Camp Street on Assessor's Map, 60 Lot 224, in the high-density residential R20 zone. You know the drill. Good evening.
Good evening, hi, my name is Attorney Sean Riley, 500 Washington Street in Abington Center, my clients are Clifford and Donna Murray. Mrs. Murray, Donna is here in the back row with us. This is a, a request for a finding to allow them to proceed with a planned expansion and renovation of the house, the family home. Donna's maiden name is Damon. For those townies out there, she's one of, from the Damon family, Damon Pontiac, Damon family has owned this house for decades, and the house next door. They've already renovated the house next door, and now they're moving to renovate this house at 40 Camp Street. And the proposal that we submitted, we sent you, or we submitted a plot plan showing all the setbacks, and we also submitted the floor plans showing the existing versus proposed, and also the elevations, so you can kind of visualize. But, just to summarize, the, the existing house conforms with the left-side setback, the right-side setback, the rear setback, and the front setback, like many of the houses in the musterfield, it is at 29.7 and still, it's set at the required 35 feet, so there's a front yard setback violation, non-conforming right now. The proposed addition, however, doesn't affect the front yard setback in any way. It's gonna go off the rear of the building, so the addition conforms to the left-side setback, the right-side setback, and the rear-side setback. There's no new
Okay.
zoning violations.
All right.
So why are we here? Because of Chapter 48, Section 6, the way it's written. Nick and I have had a lot of talk about this. The lot itself, that 40 Camp Street, is, as it stands, is 10,970 square feet. The zone is in our 20 zone, which requires 20,000 square feet. As many of you know, the musterfield is one of the oldest parts of town, and pretty much most of the lots there are not 20,000 square feet. And I just wanted to submit this for the record to show you that.
Thank you.
Killing trees.
Did you, say you submitted elevation?
It's, yeah, it should be in the last page of the, oh, I did, last page of the footprint, I'm sorry, the floor plans. If not, I did bring them, I brought, I brought a set in here. Do you not have them?
Nope.
Do you take lines? This is the same, floor plans, but my apologies, that's
Alpha, great.
So what I just handed you
That's nice.
is kind of a snapshot of 40 Camp Street, which is outlined in the red, excuse me, and then about 30, actually
What trees?
30, 40 lots in the immediate area. Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, did you have any copies?
No, you gave them, I just didn't make it in the packs.
Oh, okay, sorry, thank you. So I'll give you a minute to take a look at what we're doing there. Anyways, the building is being, the, the addition is being put out the back of the building. So as you drive by the front, the addition is no higher than the existing building, two-story single-family. But the document I just handed you just shows that out of the, I think it's 40 or so lots that I've shown in this little photo, I think four or five of them are actually 20,000 square feet or more. All of them are under 20,000 square feet. So they're all in zoning purpose, in zoning parlay would be exist, exist, pre-existing non-conforming lots, fine. So the question we had, we applied for the building permit and thought it would be issued because the extension out back doesn't violate any zoning laws, and it doesn't worsen the existing front yard setback, because we're not doing anything with the front yard. But Nick brought up a, a good interpretation of the, of this Section 6 that said, because the lot is undersized, if you enlarge the building, you're increasing the non-conformity. My answer to that was, I would agree if we were shrinking the undersized lot by cutting off a piece. We're not doing that, so we're not affecting that non-conformity. But there is case law that supports, Nick, that says, well, yeah, but you've got a building on a small lot, and when you make it bigger, you're talking about, now you're affecting density, lot coverage. However, we have a separate lot coverage bylaw in Abington, which a lot of towns now do. We don't violate the lot coverage bylaw. We can, in, in this district, you can go up to 20%. With the addition, it'd be about 14, 14 and a half percent. So in the interest of time, they wanted to get going, and we said, let's just file for the finding to say that this addition out the back, because it violates no zoning bylaws, creates no setback violations, let's say that, we need a finding to show that even though, if the lot wasn't less than 20,000, we wouldn't be in front of here, okay? So my concern was, boy, we set a precedent that every undersized lot in Abington now has to go to the zoning board for a finding if they want to put a deck on or any sort of bedroom expansion. Yes, is basically what's being, you know, one of the ways to look at this, and this was frustrating for both Nick and I, because the, the case law actually says, even the judges in Supreme District Court say that this specific law is what they call disturbing, and they use a big word, felicitious, which is basically written incredibly poorly. I would say for towns that have lot coverage, what we're proposing conforms to lot coverage, so you can just issue the building permit, because that, I think, addresses the density issue. Other towns that don't have lot coverage, I would say exactly what Nick is saying, saying it's an undersized lot, if you do anything more, then you need to go to the zoning board and get their stamp of approval. We're not gonna resolve that whole issue now, because the SJC hasn't even resolved it, so we're just asking for the finding. And the finding, as you know, is just a finding by this board to say that the proposed addition is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And I would think that the drawings make it clear, and the size of the lot make it clear, that it, there is no detriment that I can notice to the neighborhood whatsoever. You're gonna drive by and still the same facade of the house, you're gonna be building out the back, there's no setback violations whatsoever. They have the room out back, because there's still a lot of room out back to the, the rear setback. So without being a dead horse, Donna and her husband would just like to get the finding so that they can proceed with the building permit. The project's on hold right now, obviously, until we get the paperwork and record it at the registry deeds. Do you have any questions? Donna and I are here to answer.
So the proposed addition is much bigger than the original house, correct?
The proposed addition's only 20 by 30. The original house right now is, where are we, 27 by, how's it going, 31, depending on the way you're measuring.
And if I may ask, what is it gonna be useful?
Yep, it shows that it's gonna be, basically out back will be a garage with a master bedroom above. There is actually some case law that says adding dormers, adding porches, even adding garages does not even go above the threshold of any sort of substantial detriment to enable it.
And is it gonna be another driveway, or?
Yeah, the driveway's on the right side of the house and will continue to be there. It'll just loop into the garage, it'll go down the right side and into the garage.
Couple things I wanna point out. Part of this, they're removing a garage that was non-conforming.
Right.
So it's kind of nice to get that out of there. It's right on the neighbor's lot line, a detached garage. The main house is getting dormant on the second floor, which should be included as part of the finding. And just to go onto why we're here, our zoning bylaws, different than most of the surrounding towns, under non-conforming uses of structures and lots, continuation, enlargement, any lawful use of any structure, it's 175-69. Any lawful use of any structure, land or both, may be continued, although not conforming with the provision of this bylaw.
So this is the existing right here? Thanks.
Sorry. No, that's not, that's, yeah, the left side of that's existing, the right side
Is the addition.
The garage, yeah.
Okay.
But no such law, lawfully non-conforming use of structure shall be changed, extended, or enlarged in any manner except as provided for herein. Most towns break that out and have an exception for single-family and two-family dwellings that lines up with the finding of the state law, pretty much for a project exactly like this, where you're legally non-conforming, you're not increasing any non-conformities, generally the building inspector is able to just issue a permit. Ours just has a no in there, is why we're here, looking for you guys to allow it.
And I agree with Nick, with the, one exception that the, he just cited that Section 175-69. I printed it out for you, and I also did 175-82, which talks about the Board of Appeals and special permits. But the very end, it says, in case of a conflict between Chapter 808 of the Acts of 75, which is the zoning bylaw, state zoning bylaw, the, the state zoning bylaw would govern. So just as Nick said, a lot of towns have specifically put out something in a bylaw that says the building inspector can make these decisions because the law, the, Chapter 48, 6 allows them to. Our bylaw doesn't say it, it just says the state law trumps our bylaw, without specifically saying that language. It would be nice for Nick's back if we put that in there, and he had given me a couple of copies of other towns that had done that. But as you know, no zoning, no zoning law is perfect, that's why you have a zoning board of appeals. But I don't wanna make this into an SJC case, we're basically asking for a finding for the addition, which relives the house, have the, the garage with the master bedroom out back, with no exacerbation of the front setback, non-conformity, and everything conforms to all setbacks, it conforms to lot coverage, most importantly, which I think also addresses the concern about enlarging a building on an undersized lot.
Given that this is an older-looking house, that, are they gonna recite the whole thing, or are they just gonna
Yes.
So the whole thing will be of one architectural design?
Yes. Oh, yeah, it's, it's, it's still a single-family house.
Right, but it's gonna look, it's gonna just be recited, and the new and the old will have the same siding, and
It's pretty much gonna be a new house that go and take it down to the bones and kind of, building it back up, which is somewhat similar to what they did next door at the other family house.
I have nothing else, Mr. Chairman. Anybody else have other questions?
No.
Okay. Well, at this point, we'll see if anybody else has a, wants to make comments on this. Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to come up and speak on this, please come up. Listen to your name and address, please.
Hi, Jeff. How you doing, Jeff? Well, it's 164 Spruce Street. I actually had the honor and privilege of serving on this board about 25 years ago for five years, so I probably did about 100 Section 6 findings, but as Attorney Riley's pointed out, this is a unique situation that we didn't encounter back then, but as an abutter, I'm here to offer my support for what it's worth. I think it's a worthy project, and honestly, anything that gets built between me and the railroad tracks is actually a benefit to the neighborhood.
You're looking for shelter.
The board would look favorably on this petition. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else? Motion to close the public hearing? Let me hear a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I guess we'll launch into discussion here.
Seems pretty straightforward, I mean
It seems like offering a finding here will offer them comfort so that nothing comes back at them, tell our zoning bylaws, get our adjusted, if that'll happen. I'm just gonna use your words again, Andrew, that we include in this decision, the handout that was presented against us, the elevation handout, that
Do you have any issue with that?
That's already part of the application.
Was it part of the application? All right.
I always just ask that when I always just ask that when the board makes those, I think things should be built pursuant to whatever the plan is, but I would always suggest that the wording be in substantial conformance with the submitted plans, because a window may move by a foot or something, that's irrelevant, but it gives Nick the leeway to say, yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
So, you want to take a crack at taking a motion here? You're good at this.
I'm good at this?
Yeah.
I'll see. Should I have the right one? Uh... Just got the right one. Want me to go? Yeah. All right, I propose the petition for Cliff and Donna Murphy, correct?
Mari.
Mari, excuse me. I got my eyes done today, apologize. I'm having a hard time reading this.
What's it saying?
For the finding per MGL, Chapter 41A, Section 6, to construct a 24 by 30 addition on a pre-existing nonconforming structure. Property is located at 26 Camp Street on Assessor's Map 60, Lot 224, in the high-density residential R-20 zone. So we're looking for a finding, and again, we want to support the, wait, that was already part of it, so I don't say anything, correct? All the things that we got today?
Yeah, if you want to say, like Johnson's session.
Because we, he gave it to you earlier, we don't have to bring that up, correct?
Thanks, man.
So, I would like to approve.
Can I, can I add for one thing? With findings?
With the finding, yeah.
Yeah, as part of the finding decision, in the decision itself, and part of your vote shouldn't use the phrase, the board has to find that the proposed alteration or extension is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and therefore is approved, in substantial conformity with the plan.
Just like you said it.
That's, if you want to adopt that, that's great.
Go ahead, you got it. Uh... Want to second it?
Second it? Easily.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Enjoy your summer.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you. All right, the next item is that petition of Daniel Salt for a finding per Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, to construct a 12 by 20 addition with a 12-foot by 18-foot deck on a pre-existing nonconforming structure. Property is located at 224 Groveland Street on Assessor's Map 14, Lot 28, in the medium-density residential R-30 zone. If we have someone come up and speak on this, and just let us know your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Daniel Salt, and it's at 224 Groveland Street, and essentially what we're trying to do is add on a kitchen in the back of the house, push our back, back off the back of it. Our lot size is currently undersized, and I believe our left side setback is too short. This addition does not fall, if it falls in the back of the house, it doesn't approach on the neighbors in any way.
Very similar to the last application we had.
Right, yeah, it sounds like.
Except a smaller addition.
Yeah. The drawings and things seem pretty straightforward, the setbacks aren't, the issue is, like you said, it's the same thing we talked with in the last one.
Yeah, just fortunately, we have a lot of undersized lots and nonconforming structures.
Yeah. 54 on one side and 15 on the other. Not asking for much.
No.
Doesn't look like it.
Once again, you're going to continue with the physical look of the building on the, on the kitchen side?
Yes.
Back siding, or are you going to re-site the whole place?
We're going to continue with the same siding.
Okay.
Eventually re-site the whole place.
Okay. The kitchen will have access, direct access to the deck?
Yes.
I think there's a slider over there. Your pre-existing kitchen in your house now?
Yep.
Is that going to get replaced and just be added to like a family room or something like that?
It's going to be part of the new kitchen. We have a galley.
So you're just enlarging the kitchen with that?
Yeah, it's a galley kitchen right now, so it's pretty small.
Okay.
I have nothing else, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, I'll see if anyone else in the audience would like to come up and speak on this issue? Anyone? Anyone? Okay, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
On favor?
Aye.
I see no reason not to approve this.
Right.
You're a nice guy.
Well, I mean, besides the fact that it's going to make his house more functional and nicer, it doesn't create any problems for anyone, you know, in terms of setback or appearance or any of those things that bother us from time to time.
Nothing bothers you, no.
That's true. But we questioned.
Given all these findings, we need to...
See what Mr. Brown said about the...
Miss that real quick?
Yeah. I was just looking in there, see if there's, if what he was talking about is written out somewhere.
Yeah, it's in the state law, that your finding is not more substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're doing that correctly, because if we're going to get more of these, as he said, we should probably say that along with it.
Yes.
Yes, so you just need to say it's not substantially more detrimental to the, than the existing use?
Any further discussion, or are we, I need to entertain a motion?
I'm, I'm, I'm good. You with the ball?
I need, I need page one, I can't find page one for some...
Yeah, the exact wording, if you want to hear it, from the law. So, there's an exception for single and two-family residential structures, does not increase the nonconformation of said structure, pre-existing nonconforming structures or uses may be extended or altered provided that no extension, alteration shall be permitted unless there is a finding by the permit-granting authority or by the special permit-granting authority designated by ordinance or by bylaw that such change, extension, alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use of the neighborhood.
You got that, Bob?
Nope, but I'm getting there. All right.
Well, substantially dep...
Not substantially more detrimental to the existing use.
That we do, we'll say it from now on.
And the request for Daniel Salt for the finding of Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, to construct a 12 by 20 addition with a 12 by 18 deck on the pre-existing nonconforming structure, property located at 224 Groveland Street, Assessor's Map 14, Lot 28, in the medium-density R-30 zone, and not substantially more detrimental to the existing current nonconformity. The vote will be approved.
A second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
Good luck. Thank you for your patience. Okay, well, the, the last item on our agenda tonight.
I don't know about this one.
Mr. Manning is going to step, I'm going to step on him.
Highly recommended that he steps out.
Yeah, way, well, well.
This is actually, before you go, I feel like this is something we need to kick to Amy, because I think we probably will have to file ethics disclosures before we vote on this, because we, there's at least an appearance of a conflict.
Right.
So we might need to extend this out until next month, just to have, discuss with her any precautions we need to take, and any, I think we're at least going to have to submit disclosure forms to the Board of Selectmen.
Bobby, hearing this?
Yes.
Bob?
I'm trying not to.
No, this has... No, this has got to do with you.
We may have to continue this out of concern for...
So, there's, there's at least an appearance of a conflict, so we're, we're probably going to have to file ethics disclosure forms with the Board of Selectmen as our appointing authority to let them know that at least there's an appearance of a conflict and that we can act despite that appearance and have them approve that before we, at least file it with them before we vote on this.
I called the State Ethics Commission.
Oh, you did?
And they told me to step out of the meeting.
That's it?
And that's all they told me to do, which is why I brought my wife to this meeting.
Gotcha.
So I did call the State Ethics Commission.
No, I appreciate that.
I spoke to the lawyer of the State Ethics Commission, so he told me it would be wise to step out of the meeting, and then ended up letting my wife present, present to the board. That's what they told me, which is what...
And that's all they said, right?
That's all they said.
The issue there is usually they can't give you ethical advice for other people who might have a conflict.
Oh, that's right. You're right.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, again, I'm not here to argue, I'm just telling you what I did.
No, that, then, I mean, no, I'm sure you did, and I'm not, you know, I mean...
And I got your other question, I'm just telling you, that's, I did that on purpose, just to make sure. I always feel like I could just, you know, hire a lawyer, have it presented, or have my, build a, we represent me, and I called the State Ethics Commission, I said it would be all right for my wife to present, and she said, this is no problem.
Yeah.
So, but if that's what we have to do, I'm not going to...
I think we should at least ask Amy what we need to do, just so that you're protected in the chance that we approve this, and then somebody else raises that we had a conflict and we didn't take the proper steps.
So somebody could file?
Mm-hmm.
Well, at the very least, it seems like we might consider hearing their petition and then continuing it pending our discussion with Amy. If they can, they can, they can present it, we just shouldn't vote on it yet, is what we're saying.
I mean, we should probably wait to see what Amy thinks is the best.
Before you even present it.
He's just trying, he's just trying to cover it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not disagreeing, I just want to make sure we, you know...
It'd probably be cleaner just to continue the whole thing, rather than try to parse it out between the actual presentation and our vote.
Yeah.
Because the ethics... Ethics committee can really rip it apart, I, I mean, but you did say you called, but...
We have to rely on, on Amy for town council for...
Do you agree, I mean?
If, if I was asking for something more than a finding, I, I, I don't disagree, but being a finding of a nonconforming lot, continuing nonconforming, I don't, I don't see where anyone in, of the 31 people we contacted would be argumentative that I was doing anything outrageous to the town.
No, no.
Continuing nonconforming, and my only issue with this is that there's another 30 days added on to my waiting to stop construction, and that's my only, my only... Had someone told me this prior to this meeting, then I would have, you would have went through maybe beforehand, so I'm not questioning that, but if that's what we, if that's what the board wants to do, I'm not going to sit here and argue with the board. That's why I wanted to close my ears and whatever the conversation was. So, if the board would refer a reading to delay this, then that's what the board, we should have a vote on that, and we, and then we'll go from there.
If we, if we would like to talk Amy beforehand, would you agree to a continuance?
I have no choice.
I mean, we have to ask that question, right? Okay, all right.
But do you ask that that continues through me or from my wife?
From, from your wife.
Okay, so I'm still going to step out.
Because she's going to be the representative, right?
Yeah, she is. So, I would appreciate it if she could introduce herself.
Yeah, sure, definitely.
And let her address to you, and you address that fact to her, that would be the cleanest way.
We just want to let you, he's, he's brought it up, yeah.
No, and I didn't know, I didn't have the packet, so I didn't know this was on tonight, so...
No problem. I'm stepping that in.
All right. All right, thank you. All right, so, we're here to discuss the petition of Robert and Ann Manning for finding per Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, to construct an 800-square-foot addition on a pre-existing nonconforming structure. The property is located at 34 Orange Street on Assessor's Map 23, Lot 223, in the medium-density residential R-30 zone. So, you could introduce yourself and just tell us a little bit about the project, and then we'll discuss what we're going to do about it.
Hi, I'm Ann Manning, 34 Orange Street.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. We are looking to add an addition on the existing house, not a separate dwelling. I have an elderly relative that is having mobility issues and cannot live alone. So we are building a structure attached to the house that basically is a sitting room, little table and chairs, a bedroom, and an ADA bathroom. And then off the back, there will be a little screened-in porch, because he smokes cigars and he's not going to be able to do it in the house, and then a little porch outside.
Now, did this include a porch on the front of the house, a small, was this one I was looking at, or am I not remembering that right?
No, the front of the house is the bump out over the front door, that's already there. We have a 12 by 12 addition with a farmer's porch off the front, but it's just a porch with windows on it, there's no, you know, heat, anything like that, it's just an arctic dwelling, I call it. You come in with your snowy boots, hang your coat up, and then come in the house.
Yeah.
And so what we are planning to do is to build it, you won't be able to see it from the street, it's architecturally, you know, the same as the house, and it just goes out across the back, he comes in through the entryway into our kitchen, we go back over there, and it's just that he has mobility issues and, like I said, cannot live alone, and then when he passes, Bob and I will age in place and take it, because it's, everything's on the first floor, all one level.
So, Andrew, at this, at this point, yeah, maybe...
As, as obviously you heard, Ms. Manning, I mean, your husband is a member of this board, he stepped out of the meeting to eliminate any conflict he has with this, this decision, but because we're board members, there's a potential, at least, appearance of a conflict of interest, given that we serve with him.
Okay.
So before we can vote on this, we at least at a minimum likely need to file ethics disclosures with our appointing authority, which is the Board of Selectmen. So, would you be willing to postpone this, or continue this hearing until next month, so that we can just determine that we're doing everything that we need to do to eliminate any potential conflict?
Did you get the layout and everything in your packet this time, for the structure?
Yep.
So you can see, it's basically just...
Yeah.
A couple of rooms off the back of the house.
But I think...
But because our lot is nonconforming, our side setback from our neighbors is not what the zoning requires nowadays, but that's the way the house was built.
Exactly.
And the same with our neighbor's house, it's, and the one next to them, the whole street on that side seems to be, you know...
No, it looks like a good product, it does, but...
I mean, I understand...
Kind of a bind here, we...
Yeah, no, I understand that.
I had thought of it, like, last week, and I, I thought maybe you guys went over it, I, I had no idea, I didn't want to, you know, start questioning.
Yeah, we talked about Bob stepping out, but not, nothing with the rest of the board. I don't know if the board would be open to it with the, the medical issue here, doing a meeting in a week or so, rather than...
I have no problem doing that.
Continuing to a certain day and time, we don't have to continue to that, obviously generally we just continue to the next meeting date, but...
Yeah, I have no problem doing this early, if...
No, that's fine, just somebody in need, if, if, I mean, I don't know, maybe hear from the member of the public if they feel strongly about it in a negative way, but...
Yeah, well, you can...
We haven't heard from anybody that we sent all the mailings out.
I think, I think, I think we want to hear from Amy on it, and, and I, I would think that we would want to, in this situation, you know, like you said, the medical, you know, it's all about building for somebody that needs the help. Personally, I'd meet earlier, I'd meet next week if I have to, because it's a medical type of thing, and...
Yeah, just make sure that all three of you could be there at a certain time, and...
In the instance that we decide to do... In the instance that we decide to do that, without a public notice, do we have to go through the whole public process here?
No, we're continuing to a certain day and time, this would be the public notice.
I wanna do, um, two weeks, just, I can do a week too, but I mean, it's.
I mean, I, I just hate to see something like this lag, especially with, like you said, it's a special need type of thing, medical-wise and, and.
And other people here, should we listen to if they have any comment on this before we decide what timing should be? To see if they have big objections, so we can bring that to Amy too. I don't know. It's a, it's a weird conundrum here.
I mean, if we're gonna continue, and we've already opened it, so I guess at this point, we're gonna hear from them in the public and then continue.
I have no problem with that.
We'll have more questions for you whenever we do this.
Yeah, you, one of you just come up and just, just give your name and, name or names and address and whatever you have to say.
That's Greg Arline, 56 Main Street, Abington, Mass. I just wanna know if it's, if it's gonna have a sub-pump, it's flooded there? Does it have, have a foundation?
We're, we're having a, um, engineer committee, you know, with that.
Yeah, because it floods there a lot.
Oh, yeah.
It's gonna be back, it's, it's, you're gonna get damp from all the water.
Where it goes out in the back of the house is not, it's where it's drying out, if you've looked from your house.
Yeah.
You saw with the clothesline, just like that.
Okay.
It's not going any further than that, and it's not gonna have any sub-pump issues.
Ah, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, no sub-pump issues.
Okay.
Is there a foundation?
There will be.
Oh, so you're, you're gonna dig down core foundation?
Not a full foundation.
Oh, okay, oh, yeah.
That's, that's all, so, because it's a, a big flood zone, especially when it rains.
Yeah, if it's not, if it's not a full basement, that's a good thing, cause the water will go underneath.
We know because of the clay.
Right, so the soil condition there is.
All four of us that are butters have jumped.
So that's just one story, it's gonna be at level to the deck?
It's gonna be leveled with the deck, the deck will come down.
Do you have, do you have a copy of the picture or something?
I, I don't have it.
Did you show?
Oh, you got it right there?
Yep.
So it's just one?
It's just one floor, this here is the back of the house.
Yeah.
This is where the existing deck is.
Yeah.
We're gonna build it there, and we'll put the floor up here, and this is actually the, you know, the cellar door comes out now.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so this, yeah, we saw you take.
I mean, mainly it's over just all the water.
Right.
That's what's.
We're not digging up and we're not moving.
No, okay.
Alright, well, we're just wondering just about that, now it's a medical issue, I'm a little worried about the dangers.
No, it's, it's, when they do the, they're, the French drain, not only that, but when they do the basement part, they're also gonna dig out the existing basement over here and do some more waterproofing underneath there, you know, they're gonna have a thing there.
Typical Abington, we all have water.
Oh, because they have a pond in the backyard.
It sucks.
You saw the, you saw the mad. It's, so when the drain behind your house gets clogged, yeah, right, you have to keep calling the DPDW to kind of water it up.
Okay.
That's what I have to do, is call the DPDW to clean out the catch basin in front of our house, the trees growing.
Yeah.
It's, it's an ongoing issue, yeah.
You feel a little better now, Bob?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, we just question them.
No, you should, you should.
Absolutely, how long will it take to be completed?
Once we have the permits, we're ready to go shovel it up.
Okay.
We have a contractor, who's, Bob has already started doing the dismantling here, and it's gonna be gone, and hopefully he'll come in, we're looking for end of September, maybe October, but, oh, depends.
Yeah.
Main concern was just the water.
Yeah, yeah, we're hoping to alleviate that situation.
No, no, this is what this is all about, you guys talking.
We built up, we put all the dirt in the back, so now we're getting water in the back.
Well, you're gonna get water eventually, so, you live in Abington.
Yeah.
Yeah, we went, right, we went right on that, and right, that's all thinking, hopefully it'll continue, that's, that's still coming down.
Alright?
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming up, thank you, thank you.
So, I think we need to entertain a motion to continue this hearing?
Yeah, and I think.
Decide on a date certain for.
We do next Thursday?
Yeah, I think it should be expedited.
Yeah, next Thursday is fine with me.
Uh, next Thursday is what?
No, next Thursday has to be in the evening, cause my stepdaughter's coming back from Greece that day.
Seven o'clock?
Next Thursday.
I mean, in general, we don't have to do, we could do whatever time, whatever date, next Thursday would be the 19th.
Juneteenth.
Oh, that's.
Oh, I'm off, so, yeah.
Uh, this town hall will be closed though.
Yeah, yeah, so how are we gonna do that?
Not a great data pick.
Do it the next week.
I, I mean, it doesn't have to be a Thursday either, it doesn't have to be at seven o'clock. It just needs to be certain.
We have to do it in here too, right here?
I would certainly recommend it to be done here.
Yeah, I mean, next Wednesday works for me.
Could we do Tuesday, next Tuesday?
And that is what?
Tuesday would be the.
No, I can't have a duck spoon.
Okay.
Monday, I can't do, or Thursday, prefer to stay away from, but I can, I can adjust the time during the day, it's just.
We can always shoot for Friday, we'll only be here for a couple minutes.
Yeah, I mean, we could do Friday, like, maybe like rate of five or something like that.
That sounds good, that sounds good.
They have half-ds that day, but that's, I mean.
The office should still be open though, right?
Um, we can have the front door stay open, that's just on a timer.
Okay.
Will we have recording?
I'll have to set up with Kevin Tocchi, but it, it shouldn't be an issue.
I think that's probably a good idea, five o'clock, next Friday.
Next Friday?
Yeah.
So that'd be Friday the 20th.
And, and you'll get ahold of Amy tomorrow, and, so ask her if there's anything we need to do, just to cover ourselves, like, it's a great, I mean, I, you know, five o'clock, right?
Yep. Here, if, I'm assuming this room will be?
Yeah, open.
Okay.
Alright.
You have to agree to that.
I agree. We're both retired, any day.
So, entertain a motion for continuation.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to continue, um, the petition of, um, sorry, it was on last week's, um, Robert and Ann Manning for a finding under Chapter 48, Section 6, until Friday, June 20th at 5:00 PM, um, at Town Hall.
Okay, second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
I think he's gonna have, you have to give me something to sign tonight for that.
I don't know if we're up against the timeline, right?
No, probably not.
Yeah, we're not, yeah. We should be good.
We'll have to sign that tonight, the continuation.
If for some reason something happens next week, we can take up the agreement at that point, but we should have plenty of time to ask that off.
Do you wanna close the meeting?[1777.11]